Good evening, everybody. Regular City Council meeting Tuesday, April 2nd, 2020, almost 6:00 PM. Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk, may I have your call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farno.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Please join me for silent prayer and flag salute. Replay statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, April 5th at 9:00 AM and Saturday, April 6th at 9:00 AM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetrolCable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item B, council agenda approval addition and/or deletion. After none, the next agenda item C, presentation. There is any presentation?
None this evening.
Thank you. Move to the next agenda item, public comment. Madam Clerk.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Ken Lee.
Good evening, councilmember. My name is Ken Lee. I wanted to know, is there an update on the train horns? And the second problem is Galt placed senior apartments. I'm 70 years old, and we're having safety issues inside and outside the complex. The unhoused are traveling in packs of three, carrying four-foot crowbars, buck knives, high-powered flashlight. They usually come out between 2:00 AM and 4:30 AM, which I call the tweaker hours. They're hiding in our landscaping outside our building. They're trespassing in the outer parking lots of our building. They're trespassing inside our gated garage. They're breaking into our cars, sometimes sleeping in them. They are verbally confrontational. They are threatening to damage our cars. They're stating they will wait for us outside. We have over 100 seniors in our complex, and they are also gaining access into our building. We should not have to patrol our complex ourselves just to keep an eye on our cars. The complex is covered with cameras, but documents nothing. We do get quick police response when called. The corporal comes out immediately. But there's no reason for people roaming with tools and carts and bikes at 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock at night. They're shining flashlights into everything, down the alleys, into the cars. And the increase in the congregation of them is due to residential and some of the tenants that are aiding and abetting them. They're giving them a reason to come to the area every day, to hang around and gain entry into our building. We've caught them gaining entry into our building between 1:00 and 3:00 AM. And suspected allegedly drug dealing from the residential that are dealing drugs and pain pills to our tenants. And that's what's bringing them around, too. And so if we eliminate some of the problems enticing them to come, it will cut down on a lot of them doing things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Scott Robinson.
Just in time. Good evening, City Council and staff. My name is Scott Robinson. I'm the owner of Galt Cannabis Company. I'm speaking tonight to inquire about the city's next steps regarding amending the current ordinance to allow retail cannabis businesses. Over the past year, the City Council has shown interest in educating themselves on the potential benefits and the potential negatives of amending the cannabis ordinance. They have directed staff to complete extensive public outreach to receive feedback from the community. The city contracted to have the community surveyed. That survey showed that the majority of the community supported licensed storefronts. There were also four public forums held in the community, and those four forums also showed a majority support for the community, for the licensed storefronts. Based on these outcomes, I would like to request that the City Council vote to amend the current ordinance. I walked in a second late just because I wanted to make a quick stop. Here in the city, you're already allowed by THC gummies. That is the ingredient that'll be intoxicating. This package here, which, again, I just bought in the city, has more THC in it than what the state allows in the package. So if it's already in the city, I would think that there would be a better option to have it be regulated and licensed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Any other?
Can I make a comment, Mr. Mayor? I know the whole discussion of that kind of got, you know, put on the back burner because of the change in city manager. But correct me if I'm wrong. I think one of the things we were asking for next or kind of in the process of talking and educating ourselves was, Chief, I think at some point we were discussing maybe, or we had requested something from a law enforcement standpoint, and you had said, well, we're not going to take a position on it, but we would come back with data, or something like that. That was a while ago, but does that refresh your memory?
Yeah, I'm just, I had a change of bosses and sort of waiting for some direction.
Well, totally understand. But I think that's kind of where the next step was going to be and before things kind of got post, yeah. So maybe if we could, at some point in the future, that is the next, in the process, I think, that we had decided that we wanted. We could talk more about it offline, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Farmer. Mr. Robinson, we hear it. And certainly, you can contact the city manager. You can contact me through the clerk's office. And I will sit down with you. Since this is not on agenda, we cannot discuss more than that. Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Next agenda item E, reports by City Council members on regional board, commission, and committees. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I attended the Sacramento Valley Division of Cal City's Board meeting yesterday and have a little bit to report on it. Let me just pull it up on my computer here. We went over many things, including an update on the membership meetings that are coming up in, let's see, May 17th at Shasta Lake. There's going to be a meeting. It's a Friday. A consultant on affordable housing is going to be presenting. And then just a reminder, July 19th in Elk Grove, there's going to be a public safety recruitment and retention meeting put on by the Elk Grove Police Department. And then the annual conferences in Long Beach on October 14th. One of the other things that was brought up was we had some policy committee meetings on the 21st. And one of those policy committees is public safety. One of the items that was brought up was public safety related to the $20-an-hour wage increase for fast food workers. So there's a lot of discussion about the perception from some of the board members that there was an unintended consequence of layoff of employees based on that and how that relates to increased crime. And so I found that a little interesting as I think many people could have anticipated layoffs happening based on that law. So that went into effect yesterday. The other thing is, is we went to, actually, the chief is on the same committee for the tax and revenue and taxation committee for the California League of Cities. And there were several items on the agenda, but I'll highlight a couple. One was the desire or the need for the state, and it was put on by Caltrans, to replace the gas tax. In the next three to five years, there's going to be several billion dollars lost due to the electrification of vehicles. And so the governor's office has an interest in doing something different with that. One of the things that was talked about was potentially a vehicle miles traveled tax on electrified vehicles. And certainly, it bled into a full, potential full replacement of the gas tax to a vehicle miles traveled option. And so there was a lot of side conversations, obviously, about that. And one of the questions that popped into my mind was that we, as a state, have encouraged electrification of vehicles, knowing that we may or may not have the infrastructure to support them, yet now we find another problem with losing revenue as a state from the gas tax. It's kind of ironic to me, but, so that was one item. And then the other item is there's been a city manager working group that's been working on identifying and equitably, more equitably distributing tax that's recovered from online sales. And so they came up with a really good and passed unanimously definition of e-commerce and looking into the future as e-commerce will be delivered by many different means, potentially. So they're going to use that as the framework for which to lobby the state on how that tax is distributed locally. And so, pretty interesting day. And Chief, do you have anything to add to that? We covered that?
No, that covers it.
Okay. All right. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Papino.
On March 21st, while Councilmember Lozano and the chief were down south, I attended a SECOG meeting in Councilmember Lozano's place. The action items were relatively routine business. There was an interesting presentation. This took place up in Woodland. And the Center for Land-Based Learning presented a farmer training program. And that's in light of the fact that currently only 1.8% of Americans are farmers anymore. They're trying to reverse that trend. It doesn't really apply necessarily within the city limits, but around us. So if you're interested in that Center for Land-Based Learning Farmer Training Program, it's pretty interesting. And then on the 28th, I attended the air quality board meeting. And we had a reception prior to the meeting with Congresswoman Matt Suie. A chance to chat there. And then she addressed the board during the meeting. As far as notable action items, we approved $1.2 million to buy three zero-emission school buses for the Folsom-Cordova School District. And then another item, we approved applications for grants between $70 and $100 million for climate pollution reduction. And those are actually agreements that will be listing SECOG and Yolo County as beneficiaries, should we be awarded any of those grants. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, thank you. That number you gave was staggering at one point. Yeah. I'm doing my part. I got three daughters. I'm contributing all the farmers I can. So I had a library meeting last week on Thursday, and we just went over some basic budget stuff. And nothing really of significance to report on that. It's a fairly short meeting. And last night, I had the youth commission meeting in these chambers. Went really well. We had a presentation from a lady who is part of a, I guess, not like a motivational speaker, but she does, it's like a personality assessment and what kind of person you are to help you improve your success. And it was a lengthy presentation, a lot of information, very good. We also talked about some things that are upcoming. The youth commission is going to be involved with a technology night for seniors, where the youth will get together, invite seniors to come help them with their devices and things. That's coming up in the end of April. And then we also have a game night also that's being put together in conjunction with the Galt Teen Center, where the teen center youth and the youth commission youth will partner and do like a game night with seniors as well. We felt like it was a good way to interact with senior community and have that dynamic. And they're looking at doing that in May. The date undetermined. And then we said some things, we have two outgoing seniors, including our chair. And so we had some good dialogue about them, actually, three outgoing seniors. And it was overall a good meeting. So I want to thank everybody who was there. And, Mr. Mayor, I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg.
I have only one question from Mr. Lozano concerning the e-commerce. I'm just curious, are they going as far as licensing for software just depending on where it's sold? So in general, like, people always think of Amazon as e-commerce, but, you know, if you buy an app, you get charged $3. If you buy licensing, it's hundreds, $500,000, thousands of dollars, depending on the type of licensing, et cetera. Does it cover those sorts of items?
I don't believe that it did. Although the, depending on which person in this state you ask, they have different ambition about recovering tax. And I think the bigger issue, or the more focused issue was, should the, should the sales tax from those items be distributed more heavily to those who have warehouses that have the trucks and goods at? Or should it go to the place where the item is the final destination, I guess, if you will? So.
Okay.
So that was more of the focus. That's an interesting concept. I don't know. I don't know if they've gotten down, gone down that road yet.
It's okay. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. On the regional meeting, myself, on March 25th, I did attend the South Sacramento Conservation Agency GPA Board Meeting. And that's very, very basic, is nothing actually related to Galt. But there was one thing. We did approve the purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of Lee Rave Preserve. I'm going to give you a little bit of background on that. The trustee of the Skema Living Trust, owner of subject easement area, is proposing to sell the conservation agency. The 90-acre is generally located south of Jackson Highway and east of Grant Line Road. The proposed preserve is within the planning preserve unit five. On June 22nd, 2023, the South Sacramento Conservation Agency Technical Advisory Committee met, reviewed the proposed preserve, and approved it. The RIC met on February 29th, 2024, and recommended approval of the proposal. And that's all on myself on the regional board meeting. Next agenda item is F, information consent calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 2 acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and action is requested by a council member. Any council member want to pull any item on this? If it's none, then the first item is subject, receive and file warrant for period ending March 21, 2024. Receive and file warrant for the period ending March 21, 2024. Subject to minutes of the regular meeting of March 19, 2024. Accept the minute as submitted. I would like to approve the consent calendar. Looking for the motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
It is moved by Vice Mayor Lozano. Second by Councilmember Farmer. Madam Clerk, may I have your call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion approved by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item is G, schedule matter and notice of public hearing. Any?
No public hearing.
There is no public hearing. There is no notice of hearing. Next agenda item is H, regular calendar. Finance Department. Subject, General Fund, Measure Q, Contribution to Parks and Recreation Fund Policy Discussion. Mr. Borin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's agenda item is to discuss creating a policy outlining a general fund contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund that would utilize non-Measure Q funds. And staff is requesting direction from council that will be used to create a policy that we can bring back at a future date and implement in the upcoming fiscal year '24, '25 through '25, '26 budget. So we'll start with a little bit of background. Voters in Galt passed Measure Q in November of 2022, and retailers began collecting the new tax on April 1st, 2023. And fiscal year '23, the city received $1.08 million. And that was for collections from April through June 2023. And staff project $4.57 million in revenue for fiscal year '24. Part of the resolutions that council passed to put the tax on the ballot was a spending resolution that prioritizes the uses of Measure Q. Those include Parks and Recreation Programs, Landscaping, Weed Abatement, and Blight Prevention on City Property. Staff brought a Measure Q spending plan to council in April of 2023. And from that, council authorized the use of Measure Q to meet the outstanding operational needs for the lighting and landscaping districts. And that was about $626,000. And the additional costs related to resuming weekly landscaping services. And that was approximately $1.7 million. And then in the fiscal year '24 midterm budget was presented to council in May of 2023. We implemented the Measure Q spending plan that council approved. And council requested a future agenda item to discuss creating a policy outlining an annual general fund contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund that didn't utilize Measure Q funding. And so we just provided some brief financial information to help start the discussion. And so I broke it out into a couple slides, so you didn't have minuscule numbers. So hopefully, everyone can actually read them. And this is looking at the general fund contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund. So in fiscal year '23, the actual contribution was $809,000. There was no required contribution in fiscal years '21 and '22. In fiscal year '20, the general fund contributed $1.3 million. And it was $1.7 million in fiscal year '19. So five-year average, it was approximately $775,000 per year. And then going back a little further, fiscal year '18 is almost $471,000, $552,000 in fiscal year '17. And then it goes down from there to $131,000 in fiscal year '16, nearly $200,000 in fiscal year '15, and $118,000 in fiscal year '14. So looking at a 10-year average, including the figures from the previous slide, the actual contribution was about $534,000 a year. And this just kind of gives you a summary of those. So you have the $775,000 over a five-year average, the $534 over a 10-year average. Maximum over that period of time was the $1.7 million. And then we included the general fund contributions that are approved in the current fiscal year '24 budget. And that includes $1.5 million of non-Measure Q general fund and nearly $2.3 million of Measure Q. And we broke it out a little differently in this slide. So this is showing total general fund expenditures and the general fund contribution and showing what percent of the contribution to the Parks and Recreation of total general fund expenditures. And we'll focus on the actuals because those are, make a little more sense. In fiscal year '23, like we discussed, it was $809,000. So it was roughly 3.75% of actual general fund expenditures for last fiscal year. It was $1.3 million in fiscal year '20, and that was roughly 9%. And we omitted fiscal years '21 and '22 because there's no contribution, so it would just show 0%. Fiscal year '19, it was 11.18%. Fiscal year '18 was 3.47%. And fiscal year '17 was 3.88%. And I just wanted to add some notes about the figures. Like on this one, we mentioned the fiscal years '21 and '22 are omitted. The total expenditures include transfers out to other funds. And none of the figures in this schedule or the two previous ones are adjusted for one-time items like ARPA or carryforward amounts. So each year will be skewed a little bit for those items. And we're happy to provide answers or?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any council member want to?
Yeah, I'll start it off. So just for the, just so we're clear and for the crowd, the reason that '20 and '21, for the, those years were omitted is because Parks and Rec, that was during COVID, and a lot of our recreation activities, including the market, just operations in general, we'll just call it that, were not operating. So by not operating, expenditures were down. So at the end of it all, they didn't need us to contribute anything because they weren't operating as much. Is that a good summary of it?
Correct. I think later in COVID, like in '21, '22, the market was a lot busier also. So that helped also.
So I was crunching some numbers before you did your presentation. Thank you again for giving us the averages. It's very helpful. Unfortunately, we're coming out of two years that, you know, we don't have. And we're looking at the recent '22, '23 of 809. Going back to the one before that, which was 1920, was the 11% contribution, which was one of the largest. So we went from 11% to 3%. We went 11, then nine, then three. So we're trending downward. But it's like we don't really have, in my opinion, a really good snapshot of what we're going to be looking at consistently in the post-COVID world, right?
Yeah. And part of that's some of the one-time nature. So like for ARPA funds, so those are all general fund expenditures. So any year where we have ARPA funds, that'll skew it.
Yeah. So I took the budgeted number percent, just not the numbers, but the percentages. And then I also, and I averaged those from the ones you have up on that chart. And then I took the actuals, which obviously are the real numbers because that's what we actually had to contribute, right? And I averaged those. And the difference was 6.9% average on the left and 6.25. So we're like in the six-ish realm of what the average contribution. But again, I mean, the numbers are all over the place, 11, 8, 3, even 3, you know, right? So my thought, and I'm just going to throw this out there and maybe spark the discussion to my constituents who are going to go after me here, is? to my constituents who are going to go after me here, is although we've seen a huge bump in the general fund, I mean, I'm looking at what forty, we have a forty percent increase from twenty fourteen to now in the general fund, went from fourteen million and changed to twenty one million, that's, that's a huge jump, right? I don't know, I mean, that scares me, like, I'm like, are we going to see consistent growth like that? I don't like to think that we would, so.
Well, part of that is Measure Q is currently recorded in the general fund, and so that's nothing staff is working on. We're evaluating creating a different fund that's just Measure Q, so that way the revenue would go there and the expenditures would live in whatever funds they are, and that Measure Q fund would reimburse the other funds.
So, 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 so three just quick little points. One is, I personally, I think the people of the city that voted for Measure Q feel that it should be a, it should be to supplement and better Parks and Rec, not replace current funds being put in. That's the consensus that I get from almost ninety percent of people I talk to. Number two is, the problem with us sitting here and saying we should contribute X amount, we should continue to contribute X amount every year, is we don't know what the budget's going to do. I mean, if we say, let's keep contributing eight hundred thousand, well, if the budget continues to grow, then it's going to be no problem, but what if it went the other way, then it's going to be more of a burden. So what I would propose is instead of talking about a fixed number, we talk about a fixed percentage. So for example, we say, moving forward, we're going to contribute five percent of whatever the general fund budget is to Parks and Rec. And right now, just so you know, the five percent based on our current general fund is about a million dollars, which seems to be in line with kind of where we're at. Six percent is one point two, I don't think we need to contribute that much, so five percent seems like a good round number. Obviously, we have to come up with, even if that's the idea that the council wants to talk about, we'd have to figure out what percentage we fill, but I'm just throwing out the idea of a percentage because I feel like then it stays relevant. If the budget goes up, the percentage is, you know, relevant, if it goes down, it's relevant, but it always stays there. And, and honestly, I think that's a small piece to give to Parks and Rec, which is a huge piece of our city. That's, that's a small piece of the budget, in my opinion, but that's where I'm at right now, I'll let my others speak now.
So, hi, everybody. Looking at the, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, because I didn't think about it this way when I read it and actually reread it again before the meeting, but on the front, it shows, you know, a projected four point six million, I'm using round numbers, very round because it's just to make it simple. And then we've already or had allocated one point seven and six hundred thousand to other funds. So if you take that, and then you add, just for twenty twenty three, because I really think the other years are a little anomaly, we kind of made some corrections, and I feel like that's where we're, that's a more solid number, it seems to be consistent with flow, but that's just me. So anyway, if you take the other two values, that's one point three million, eight hundred thousand to Parks and Rec, that's two point one, you subtract that from four point six projected, you end up with two point five, roughly. And that's a pretty rough number, but I want to say that for the public, you know, even though Measure Q is bringing in four point six million, if you deduct what we've already, it's previous, you know, I don't want to make that a strong point, it could be different and most likely will be, but if you deduct what we already allocated, you know, to cover needed expenses, you're only left with two and a half million, so, and that, that money goes quick, you know, if you want a playground structure, it's six to eight hundred thousand dollars, right? And we, you know, COVID, we were able to replace a bunch of them, and those numbers are fairly accurate, Mr. Boring.
Yeah, we have the, the one million from the prior fiscal year that's just in the, in the act for it's just shown as in the general fund fund balance, and then we do have a surplus projected for the, the current fiscal year. We have some other projects coming up that council authorized use of Measure Q, like the, the poolside replacement and the skate park will utilize some of those Measure Q funds.
Sure, and, and that's, that's a great point, that's, you know, kind of where I'm headed. So I just want that to kind of an overview of what funds are actually available. People will see a four point six number and think, well, how come you didn't get more stuff because we spent, we spent it on needed things? And now I understand why Mr. Farmer asked for the percentages, that actually makes a lot of sense. So in general, you know, having said that for the public, I want to make sure that it's spent on, as much as possible is spent on community recreation, but also with the need for forecasting of maintenance and repairs, you know. We got, we got very lucky with ARPA funds to replace, I think, six or seven play structures at, you know, seven hundred thou, five play structures, thank you for the correction, at, at, you know, six or seven hundred thousand dollars each, and that's not something, we just simply didn't have that money before, so I think about also like the Meadow View Park, they took down a shade structure that was unsafe and it hasn't been replaced, you know, so if we, we don't think about, it's fine to buy things and provide the public with something, but if you don't allocate a certain, certain portion for the future repairs, you're going to end up in the same hole you, we got lucky enough to avoid, I guess, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Before I move to the next council member, I'd like to ask any public comment on this end item.
Chris Brosman.
Most of you know this is near and dear to me. I went from all the way from when we did the council meeting over at the police station to today, and I think what we're blessed is that all five of you are still sitting on the city council. That took us from inception to present day, looking at it and figuring out how we want to carry it forward. Future councils are coming up soon. We're going to have two new members or possibly the same two coming back, depending on how the election goes. The way the ballot was written, the funds aren't tied to just Parks and Rec. That concerns me, but you five individuals sitting up here know when you were voting on whether it was going to be a half a percent or quarter a percent or one percent, what your intentions were to do with those monies. I think we're very fortunate in that people did vote for it. I think that all of our home values can increase because of Measure Q, just a one percent. We can make this a more desirable community, you know. We get compared up against Elk Grove, Lodi, all these different things, but I think we can build a Parks and Rec department and upgrade our facilities here that our community uses with this money. But the crucial part in my mind is that it was meant to supplement the funds. Now, in twenty two, when we voted for it, the city contributed about one point five and change. That was on, on the higher side, and I agree entirely with Sean, first time I'm hearing it tonight, is a percentage. I think the percentage, and then it's just a matter of you guys coming to a percentage that you can agree to, and setting the precedent for future city councils to look at that and say, okay, as a city of Gaunt, we've committed to our youth, to our citizens, that we're going to spend X amount of revenue on making our community stronger and a better place to live. Really, tonight, I was really pleased to see this on the agenda. We've kicked it around, but I think with the elections coming up, we really do need to set a firm guideline down to the city employees with how we're doing it, or how you guys would like to do it, and also set for future city councils to look at the guidance. And that's what it will be, is it will be guidance. Let's say everything goes to pot, not pot, I guess, that would be a bad word. The economy tanks, or we start seeing different things happening. Legally, council can still use those funds. Now, I think with the agendas that we have on plan right now, we probably have ten years of spending that four point five, and of course, that four point five will continue to grow over the next few years, but so will the expenses of it. That's where I like a percentage too, because dollars don't increase in the value, so if we came up and claimed a million dollars and said, okay, well, pie in the sky, more five hundred thousand as was suggested, those dollars are never going to change, but current dollars are going to change, revenues will change, and by keeping it as a percentage, we're going to continue to get it. And that's going to allow us to pay our people more, so we can actually have landscaping people out there. We can keep our community looking better. Again, thank you for chance to talk.
Thank you, Chris. Any other? Thank you. Any other council member want to make any comment or?
Yeah, first, thanks, Boring, for putting the numbers together. We're dealing with a whole lot of moving targets. I'm looking at specifically, once we get past eighteen, when the council had to cut everything back to the bone, and we went back, you know, that was when we cut down to one, one landscape service a month. So, you know, we were contributing that amount in those subsequent years, then throw COVID in, and we were contributing it to get, just to get up to that level of service, correct?
That's correct.
Low level. So that's one sketchy target. And then in twenty two, twenty three, we're way down, and that's when Measure Q first starts coming in, correct?
Correct, we began receiving it at the end of fiscal year twenty three.
The other moving target on this is the market and what it contributes. We've seen that go down, and then we've seen it start to come back. You know, and I do like the idea that we set a target of what the general fund should contribute. Whatever we come to, I think, needs to have, we're going to have to have a regular schedule of evaluation, because, you know, if the market goes back up and starts bringing in, you know, a couple million dollars a year, and goes back to the old days where it was able to fully fund, then, you know, we're going to have to start looking at this, you know, huge unspendable account of all this money that's dedicated, and, you know, have the, the flexibility to put that where it needs to go, or perhaps back to the taxpayers in some form. You know, and as Mr. Brosman said, yeah, we, we could, we could tank and have another recession and have the necessity to, you know, start, start pulling money again to, you know, just keep the police department operating. I can't put a number on it, but I think Councilmember Farmer's five percent is probably, you know, right in the ballpark, knowing that, you know, we're going to need to be reassessing that in years going out to fine tune it. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, if we create a policy, we would want to incorporate that, so when we brought the budget to you, we would kind of outline, here's the, you know, the formula that you guys created for us, and here's where we come up, and this is included in the budget. And if we needed to revisit that at some point, we could, and that would be part of the, the regular budget meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of comments, and I agree, at some level, we're going to need to continue to have general fund push into the Park and Rec Fund. I would also agree that we have some ability to increase our revenue, not just through the market, but that's a great point, but also through recreation programming, through volume, and, and to think that, that recreation doesn't pay for itself, there's, there's several areas in which it does, and, and actually brings in additional money. And I'm not talking about the pool, because the pool is, is definitely never going to, in my lifetime likely, be such a revenue generator that it pays for the operation, I get that. One of the things we haven't talked about tonight is the parks master plan. And where I struggle with, just to be totally transparent with everybody in the room and online, and is, I struggle with, and I said this last year, right around this time, with the fact that I don't know that we, as a city, whether it be the staff or the policymakers or anybody, really know what we need. And then I started looking at it from kind of a business model, how would I build a budget around a business? And I would really look at what my customers' needs were, the, you know, the, the cash flow I had, and then also what expenditures I would need. And I don't think it's totally out there, I mean, I think we can get kind of close with what expenses are going to be operationally, we kind of know that's going to be pretty steady, I mean, there's going to be increases, but pretty steady. And so my thought coming in here tonight was, until, well, until we do that public outreach and determine what level of, I guess, operations and what level of capital improvement people want, what level of additional Parks and Recreation programs people want or have ideas about, and how that fits in with our current staff. I, I don't know that we're going to be able to pinpoint it, and to, I can't remember who said it, somebody's point was, if we have a dedicated amount, and I don't have a problem doing it annually, just like I didn't last year, let's continue doing what we're doing until we can get our feet under us. But I think to have a dedicated amount that then would sit, because we don't have enough money for a huge capital improvement project, but yet we do have enough to do little things, well, those little things aren't what's needed or wanted, then how do we justify, you know, having that money sit in an account over time? So I would just ask my colleagues to think about what the public's needs, wants, and desires are, in addition to it just not being a number thing as we move forward. I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to do with the will of the council tonight, but I, I think it's going to be really important that we keep tabs on it, because here in the next few months, we're going to start doing public outreach. And, and again, having been through one of those as a policymaker, you, you get surprised as, as much as you feel like you have the pulse of the community. I, I was certainly surprised by the last one I went through. And so I would just say, think about that as we move this conversation forward. I think Armando has done a great job, or at least he did in two thousand eighteen, when he put a presentation together that said, hey, if we fixed everything today, it would be four million dollars. So I'm sure he still has that tracking. And so certainly, it's going to be more than four million, based on what we knew in two thousand eighteen. When this parks master plan comes back, people may say, you know, we're not so much interested in that, we're more interested in the neighborhood parks, and we're not interested in the community centers, and I'm just using that as an example, which are higher ticket items. So I, percentages initially in budgeting throughout kind of scare me a little, but I see the, the thought process behind it, and I think I can wrap my head around that a little bit. But I, the reason they scare me is because of exactly what Mr. Brosman brought up, is this commitment, and the community will hold us to this commitment of whatever percentage we use, and if we have an issue of a downturn in the economy, then what do we do? Do we tell the commitment, tell the, the community that our commitment wasn't real? You know, they trusted us in two thousand twenty two to, to spend their tax money, additional tax money. So I just throw those out as thoughts, and certainly for topic of conversation, but I, I just don't know that we know everything at this point, and I'm, as many of you know, I'm more of a risk taker than many. I just get a little, little nervous about the end result in coming back again, maybe in six or eight months or a year from now, and saying, well, we or eight months or a year from now, and saying, well, we, we identified this percentage, but now, the community doesn't want all that, we want more of a percentage, or we want, you know, we want more money going toward it. And I, just be aware of that, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I can add administratively, probably the easiest option is something similar to Measure R, where it's just a fixed dollar amount that gets contributed every year. If we do move to a percentage, then we'll probably want to tweak it, so it's probably based on, like, prior year actuals, less any, like, one-time capital items. So it wouldn't be based on, you know, if we had a large ARPA items or other items like the, the skate park or water slide that are going to skew it from year to year, so it would be more consistent. And that would help a lot with budgeting, because as we get to the end, we're, you know, making tweaks to balance the fund, and if it's a percent of that year's budget, then it makes it very difficult to present a balanced budget when we do that.
Let me ask you this, since you brought that up, Matt. So we're getting ready to embark on a two-year budget cycle, which is how we do our budgeting here. But we just went through a mid-year adjustment meeting, last meeting. Is there an op, is, will there be, if we were to say, let's say, like council member Farmer suggested, we, five percent, and you came to us and said, hey, we have this project that's going to, that we're going to need more than five percent from the general fund. Do we have the ability to do that at, and I know we have the ability to do it, but how many stops along that two-year cycle do we have the ability to do that?
Council could adjust appropriations at any council meeting. So we have the regular mid-year, the two-year cycle, and we have the midterm. We try and bring some quarterly updates throughout the year, so that they're not huge presentations every time. But anytime if there was a project coming up, if, say we got the parks' master plan, and there was a project that, say, was two million, and we had sufficient Measure Q money for part of it, and you needed more general fund, council can approve an appropriation to use those general fund money at any time. So if we create a plan, it wouldn't limit the amount of general fund that council could use for different parks and recreation or capital projects. It would just be establishing a baseline of, here's what we're going to put in the budget, and it's going to be there, and we'll present it. So, as we present the budget, if, if there were years where we had certain hardships or, you know, there was a recession or something else, we might revisit that at that time, too, if we didn't think that the, whatever level is going to be sustainable, or if it was going to create structural deficits.
So if we were to say today, five percent, or the dollar amount that closely fits that, and it were five point two percent in a particular year, would that make that easier for you, or would it make it more difficult?
I would recommend either a flat dollar amount, or like five percent, and then we'll, when we bring back the actual policy, we'll identify the formula, so like five percent of prior year actuals, less one-time capital items. So that should capture your routine ongoing stuff and, and make it a stable contribution, so you don't have large spikes from year to year.
Okay. That's, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Borin, thank you, Mr. Borin, thank you for your presentation. I was, you know, by listening to my colleagues, very much like a percentage, kind of, I'm leaning on that, because with the percentage, your funds can going to increase, so you don't have to go back. And I also agree with the vice mayor. If there is anything else comes up, we need more money. And I believe you, just clarification on that, if we put some kind of percentage, but if we need due to emergency or something, then we can come back during the year circle, right?
Correct.
So if we need something, then, then we should come as a, so, I'm, I'm leaning towards if we can, at this time, if we can, instead of a dollar amount, get something percentage, so this can be going to increase in the future, but if we need something, how we should react and just bring on the meeting? And that's, whatever, as everybody wants, we will move the forward.
And if I could just make a comment, Mr. Mayor, you know, this, this fluctuation, if, if you will, provided we get everything back from the community outreach and we're moving forward, I'm going to make that a big if, or when, right, because I think things will change then. If we do zero-based budgeting, at the end of the year, some, if we, if there's a need for more money, or let's even look at it the other way, there's, I don't know, one million dollars sitting in Parks and Rec that it may or may not be used that year. And we have to do something in another piece of the city where somebody's going to lose a piece of their budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, so if, like, let's just say it was a million dollars, that the general fund would just automatically contribute to the Parks and Recreation Fund every year, and in a given year, like, say it was fiscal year, was it twenty-one and twenty-two, where the general fund didn't need to make a contribution, so those funds would stay in the Parks and Recreation Fund and be part of the fund balance. And if you wanted to transfer, if there were hardships in, in other funds within the city, we would have to evaluate that if we wanted to. The cleanest way is probably reduce general fund contribution to Parks and Rec in that fund, or in that fiscal year, and divert those resources to the other fund that was having a hardship. But if, if it came to that, where some other fund had operational needs that we couldn't meet with some other source, then we would bring that back to council to get authorization to, for some sort of solution.
Right. Okay. And we do that a little bit now. I mean, we use general fund reserve to kind of take care of some of those other, other needs from time to time. But, okay. I just, I, I, I love the intent of continuing to do what we can from the general fund into the Park and Recreation Fund. I really think we need to be serious about increasing revenues, whether it be through the market, rental of the market grounds or something, and, and through our programming, because I think there's some true value there in our community. And, you know, as Mr. Brosman brought up, I mean, we could, conceivably, in a year from now, there could be several different people up here, right? And so, including a majority. I mean, you never know what will happen, right? And so, I, I see the need to kind of give the direction of what our intent is. Having gone from one agency to this agency, I would also hate to hamstring future councils with the ability to be flexible in their policy. And so, how we deliver the direction, I think, is, is going to be important, but certainly with the eye on Measure Q funding goes to Parks and Rec and all the things that we listed by resolution, and that doesn't go away. The resolution doesn't go away unless there's an action by the council as a whole, so, and then also with our, our contribution. But I think it needs to be reasonable based on what we know at the time, and, and certainly, as the, as I've mentioned before, the parks' master plan's going to come back, I think we're going to learn a lot from it. I mean, we haven't had an update in thirteen years, fourteen years now. So, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Councilman Lozano, just for clarification on your concept, I guess, when you talk about capital projects, you're, are you talking about things that we would use for non-Measure Q items, and you would, or things that would be used for parks and recreation, like larger projects for Measure Q items?
Say that again, because I don't know that I understood.
Okay. When, when, when the discussion was happening about capital projects, it wasn't clear to me, you know, how you were parsing those funds out for, there wasn't like a specific example to say, you know, we're going to do this, so we would or would not want to use such funds.
Yeah. So what, what I was getting at was, if we had a capital project, and I'm thinking of Parks and Recreation, and I'm thinking of the lists that Armando put up, you know, it seems like a million years ago, but it was just, I don't know, five and a half or six years ago, about the Littleton Center needing to be upgraded, about the Chabola Center needing to be upgraded, the, the white elephant in the room being Walker Park. I still get people talking to me about Walker Park and needing more there. Certainly, our market grounds, and, you know, those kinds of things that are all directly related to the Park and Recreation Fund that then provides money to, or revenue to the Parks and Recreation Fund. So when I'm talking about those capital projects, that's what I'm talking about, not necessarily outside of that.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can, I'm going to help clarify, so this proposed policy wouldn't amend the, the previous spending resolution, so the uses of Measure Q in that spending resolution would still be valid, so it, we wouldn't say, take Measure Q and, you know, go do C Street with it. It would still be used for those uses outlined in the spending resolution.
Sure. And we're just discussing open idea, yeah, excellent, that, that's fine. You know, as, as far as flexibility, I mean, resolutions are fine, but correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Splendario, three votes and the money goes as we see fit, and that's the same as it ever was, right? So I think what Mr. Brosman and, and many people in the city is one, is a strong commitment, and we've done that, but what is the possibility of changing our code that would require a four-vote resolution for the council to take money away from parks and recs under Measure Q dollars?
So basically, a resolution that said, this is how much we want to contribute to the Parks and Rec Fund?
No.
And, no?
No, no, not really. So, just
Yeah.
For, for Measure Q to go on the ballot, it required four votes?
Oh, yeah.
Four yeses, and, right, and then abstain or no, it doesn't matter, but it had to have four
Yes.
of the council members, so a supermajority to go on the ballot. Can we do the same sort of resolution, where it would require a supermajority for the funds to be allocated other than what's already on this outlined in the information we're giving today?
Yeah.
The council, the report?
I'm very hesitant to pass any legislative document that is beyond the simple majority requirements for resolutions to be passed and to bind future councils. It's very questionable legally whether any, any, one council from one term can basically force a future council to undo something by a four-fifths majority vote. So, I wouldn't feel comfortable recommending or advising on that. I just, I, and I think it's very legally questionable whether one council can bind a future council by imposing a supermajority requirement, where it's not otherwise authorized by state law. If we were a charter city, maybe we'd have a little additional flexibility, but as a general law city, I don't think we have that kind of flexibility. So, that's, that's my answer right now. I mean, I'm happy to continue to look at it, but, you know, if you're asking me today, that's what I would say.
That's a fair answer, there's just, that's a fair answer, and that goes back to, the flexibility is the same as it ever was. So, all things said, you know, I always worry about the future and repairs, as I mentioned, and I would be okay with five percent as laid out in our agenda packet, you know? I'm okay with that. I think if there's going to be, if there's going to be a need for change, every council would be reasonable to take care of business.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick note on, I did reach, read something at one point that talked about, there was a supermajority required for the change of a land use from recreation to another type of use, it was something in the California Constitution that was a four-fifths vote required. Might have been for generals, I don't know, I'm not going down that rabbit hole, but I'm just saying, just maybe think of
There's lots of statutory rules that require certain majorities or supermajorities, but something like what Councilmember Vanderburg's describing would have fallen into.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it. So, I wrote down some notes after hearing my constituents talking, everybody's made really good points. One thing I wanted to point out first, I think it's just a big mistake to even look at the two years that we didn't contribute, because, I mean, to say, well, there could possibly be a year where we don't need to contribute. I mean, Parks and Rec wasn't even really operating at full level. Just because we didn't contribute money that year didn't, does not mean at all that Parks and Rec didn't, couldn't have used a ton of money that year to do a lot of things they needed to do, which we're still trying to do with Measure Q money. So I think that's a mistake. I think, you know, what Councilmember Lozano brought up about the master plan is a good point, you know, we're, we still need this roadmap to tell us what, what we, what we need and stuff. But I think what I would say to that, to that point is, though, I think what the community's wants are always going to exceed what we're going to have. So no matter what percentage we allocate, and whether that percentage changes over time with councils or whatever, the community is always going to have higher ambitions and wants, then we're probably going to be able to give them at any given time. So I, the likelihood that money's going to sit around in Parks and Rec and not be used for something, to me, is very unlikely. But Rich makes a great point, that, you know, we'll know a lot more once that master plan comes out, and we'll kind of get our bearings on what the community wants, and then, I think, really for priorities, that'll be the big thing, is where the priorities are. I think we, probably all of us, with the constituents and the people that we talk to, the community probably have a general understanding of what people want, but we don't really understand, like, you know, the maintenance side of it, obviously that's a big one, because people don't think of that. They want things, and they don't think about how to, we're going to take care of them. But I think the other thing is, what are the priorities? Like, what should be the priorities? And we'll know all that when the, when the feedback comes back. I wanted to make a point to, you know, it's really not unfair to, to, to say, you know, we're going to contribute a percentage, you know, and I hate to use the police department, but you're the only one that has a tax measure, but the police department has Measure R. Measure R grows every year. But does the police budget decline every year? No, typically it grows every year. So the contribution from the general fund grows, even though their additional measure grows. So it's not unfair to look for something similar. Using the percentage, again, keeps it relevant, if something like Mr. Brosman mentioned, and there's a downturn in the economy, well, it's a percentage. So if the general fund goes down, then we're not, we're given a smaller portion, so it's all going to be relevant. To Jay's point, and to what Rich was also saying, and I think Kevin mentioned as well, is, there seems to be this concern about, are we able to change whatever? Well, look, we can sit up here and promise all that we're going to promise, the, the reality is that councils can change anything they want. A future council can change the whole resolution for Measure Q, they can say, we want it to be thirteen percent, we're going to contribute, or they want it to be four percent. It's all semantics at that point about trying to worry about who's going to change what. We can change it every year if we wanted. I think what we're really looking for, or the point of this conversation, is that we're looking for a baseline. We're looking for a baseline number that says, this is what we want to see contributed. It's going to be easier for, for future councils, and even us, to go down with that than it is to go up. So I want to point that out. And the other thing that's really important is that really, what I'm trying to get done here is, and I think we've been trying to do this for many years, is, we're trying to get away from the ideology that the general fund is, is helping out, we're, we're chipping in. You know, we don't, we don't talk about, oh, the general fund had to, had to make a shortfall for the Public Works Department of X amount, or we had to make a shortfall for the police, we never talk about that way, but that's always the way it's been referred to with Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec deserves its own budget item. And we need to set a baseline, X percent, that this is what the budget for Parks and Rec is, not, let, let's just see how much they need, and we'll give it to them. That's, I want to get away from that. I want to get away, I want to say, this is what we're going to do. So I don't want to be like, well, they didn't need five percent, they only need three point five. There's always going to be a need. Let's give them a percent. If things get bad and we have to take that percent down, so be it. But I think the baseline is really where we need to start, and that's going to be signaling that, that's the message we signal future councils. I also think it's important that we do that now, because we do have an election coming up. We don't know what the makeup of the council is going to be next year, and I think it's super important that this council, the one that has brought this whole concept from its infancy to reality, is the one that sets this baseline. We're the one that sets that and says, okay, future councils, you guys can change policy, we know that, and that's, that's the right of future councils, but this is what we wanted at the time, and we're hoping that you would be mindful of that moving forward. So with that being said, you know, we only contributed three point five, three point seven five this last time, most recently, but we were prepared to give five point five in our budget, so we tech, obviously, we could have afforded the five point five, we just didn't have to do it. So for me, I think five percent's a good number, but to be honest with you, I'm kind of like, in the world of negotiating, you always set the negotiation point different. So what I would propose to the council, because I think it's easier to go down than up, is So what I would propose to the council, because I think it's easier to go down than up, is for this meeting, again, this is just conceptual, and we can change it anytime, it's like Mr. Boing said, that we tonight, I would like to see if my council would agree, that we come up with a flat 6% to contribute to Parks and Rec moving forward. And obviously, we're going to reassess it every year anyways, but I think.
Well, to that point, 6% would probably be the lowest amount in most every city across this state for percentage that they contribute to Parks and Recreation.
Well, it's lower than the average we did out of all these, it's lower than the average.
Well, right, but I'm just saying that, you know, 10% is probably a norm for cities to contribute to Parks and Recreation. And this would be far below that, and it's, to your point, it's a constant theme that, you know, there's a misconception about why, where money's going, and something's a burden on the general fund when that's not really true. It's a huge break for the general fund. So if you wanted to go 6%, I would actually support that.
So, can I clarify, so, because tonight we just need direction, so it sounds like council wants to create like a percentage of general fund that would be the basis of the contribution. So we'll take that, we'll have to tweak it a little bit, so we'll find a way that we can do it administratively, so it'll probably be based on prior actuals, and we'll take a look and see if there's any, like, large one-item things that's going to significantly skew that number and remove those. And then we can bring back, like, 5% to 6% or a couple of different options. It'll probably come back at the first meeting in May to adopt the policy. And then we can show you, you know, based on the way we can calculate it administratively to fit it in the budget process, you know, based on this percent, here's what the contribution would be for the next fiscal year.
I think you have your direction.
And I would be remiss if I didn't make this piece of statement. You know, back in, I don't know, August or September of 19, this council had to make a decision, based on what we knew at the time, to cut $1.4 million across the city. And there were things on there like lighting, increasing fees for lighting, and on and on and on. And I just, I just want to point out that although, I don't think it was contentious at all, but what I do believe is that the best crystal ball is looking in the history, and that actually, the budget was reduced by that amount on a 3-2 vote. When we were talking about minimal, about significant impacts to different places in the city, different departments of the city, and so I think the, certainly the intent moving forward about making a contribution is the right thing to do. But I would also lean on, as direction, if I could get support for this, to reevaluate and look at areas in the Parks and Rec Department where revenue can be generated. And nowhere else in the state do they have the ability to generate revenue through a market like we do. And so I think that the prudent thing to do is continue to look at that and make sure that we're doing everything we can to improve that opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Boing, you have enough direction from, you heard from everybody, you have enough direction to the next move, right?
I do, thank you.
All right, thank you, then.
And just to Rich's comment, yeah, 100%, and I think that's a conversation that's probably, usually happen when we have like Armando here, because, you know, clearly, running a business, you always look at like, you know, you're always looking at, how do you raise your, you know, how do you make more money, right? So I don't think anybody in Parks and Rec wants to say, "Yeah, we don't want to raise our bottom line." But I think with him being absent, definitely that conversation, we should definitely include that in the greater discussion. You know, what you're wanting to do, just to clarify, is you're wanting to make sure that in this larger discussion here about how we're going to spend the money, and we got Measure Q, but also, let's not forget about the emphasis on being creative to come up with more ways to make Parks and Rec more profitable in addition to Measure Q.
Yeah, yeah, and I would say this, you know, we've made a commitment that Measure Q goes to Parks and Rec. I think it's the right thing to do. By state law, we have a commitment that the revenue from the market has to go to Parks and Rec. And now we're talking about, again, right thing to do by, until, at least until we get our feet under us in terms of the Parks Master Plan and what true revenues are going to look like, we're now putting additional money in, or not additional, we're continuing to put money in from the general fund. And at some point, when you have, and again, I just look at it kind of like a business, you have all these revenue sources, and when you increase revenue in some areas, you can do more things. Do we know what those more things are? And I don't want a council, you know, two years or three years from now, struggling over, "Well, you know, we have to do X percent." I mean, it's very clear the will of the council is to do a percentage, and I can go along with that, but I would just say, we need to, whether Armando's here or not, Councilmember Farmer, I think through the city manager, I think he's heard the concern for that. And he'll, I'm sure, pass that along.
So, Mr. Lozano, I would support your concern about growing the market revenue. I would only throw in the caveat that I believe Parks and Rec is always doing their best to generate revenue, and the things you've done with the Saturday market are good evidence of that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move to the next agenda item, Parks and Recreation Department. Subject, City of Galt Special Events Sponsorship Program Review for Fiscal Year 2024-2025.
Okay, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So today, I'm going to be presenting the Special Event Sponsorship Program Review of the applications that we received for fiscal year 2425. At the time of submitting this report, we only had received seven, and we currently now have 11. And there was also pending service costs that we were waiting for. So when we do come back April 16th, I will have an amended report that has that information in addition to the review. So the Special Event Sponsorship Program, as I said, we now have 11 special event applications that we received for the Special Event Sponsorship Program Review. They are requesting monetary amounts and in-kind contributions. The impact for the community is that they'll be developing communication and social networks within a community, enhancing community spirit. They are creating memorable and impactful experiences and providing Galt residents with more opportunities for fun and inexpensive activities. The sponsorship policy goal and objectives were, are to promote the City of Galt as a desirable place to live and visit and do business. They're promoting the City of Galt as a visitor's destination and bring tourism associated to revenue to the city, enhance the quality of life and well-being, advance the city's commitment and pride in being a multicultural community, and encourage the development of neighborhood identity and pride, promote cultural and artistic awareness among the citizens and street, aligns with the City of Galt mission statement and our strategic plan. Again, the sponsorship request, each of them cannot exceed $5,000 per event unless the City Council approves a higher amount, which sets the entire budget for the Special Event Sponsorship Program. Before we get into each slide, this will just go over what soft cost examples are. Would be rental facility fees, any staff costs that are not related to their regular schedule, tables and chairs of moving, or any type of equipment. Hard cost examples would be any staff outside work schedule, security services, or any tangible items, traffic control items, or anything like that. So, review of applications submitted, this is the seven that were submitted, and I'm going to go to the next slide as the 11 are included in that portion. So the first one that we received is the Galt Teen Center. They submitted and are requesting $2,000 to assist with their raised bed garden that they're wanting to put. There is no fee for the teens to participate. They're wanting to do this to create a garden and then empower teens by fostering their physical health, mental well-being, and social connection and life skills. Liberty School House renovation, they are requesting $5,000, and this is to support and create an educational museum for schoolchildren. It's going to benefit and highlight how and under what conditions children attended schools in the 1800s, and it also will include displays of life dating back to that period. Another request was for the Ray House ceiling renovation, that was $5,000. It's also a renovation, will include three rooms in the Ray House, and it'll also assist with parts of the tours of the museum for regional schools and the community. Galt High School, every 15 minutes, it's affecting a street closure, it's for April 23rd, and the cost was for Public Works Street Closure Assistance, and it's $43646. Farm to Fork is going to be on the Fourth Street Promenade on September 14th, this is a ticketed event. There is no cost for any, like, soft cost or anything, there would just be police service costs, and it is two police officers that will be assigned to the event. Galt High Alumni Association, it's at Littleton, this is a ticketed event. The rental facility fee is waived, and then they are only charging hard costs, which is security services for $540. La Heim of Galt is the trick-or-treat on Fourth Street. This is scheduled for October 26th, a free community event, and the police service cost, there is no police service cost, but there is Public Works Street Closure Cost of $4,0520. Liberty Ranch Homecoming Parade, this is assistance of the Police Department. This is the one that we will amend when we submit the next report for April 16th meeting, and we'll have that adjusted cost in there. Galt Chamber has submitted three requests. One is for their wine, beer, and food event that they have at Littleton, and they only, the fee will be waived for the rental, but the security services will be $540. And then they also are requesting Old Town Dinner and Dance at the Promenade, and they're requesting $5,000. And Fall Harvest Festival is another one at the Promenade, and that will be $5,000 also, they're requesting. So the current total right now for the 11 events, minus the one that we still need, is $29,199, and then I will be submitting that amendment for the next meeting. I do have several representatives from, that have submitted applications, so is it okay if I call them up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you want to speak?
Quick clarification, you said 11 events?
Yes.
But on the presentation, it says seven.
Right, so when we submitted, there were seven, yeah.
Good evening. Kat Seebolt, Community Relations Director, Galt Chamber. The three events that we submitted for, the dinner dance. Our aim for the dinner dance is to kind of revive what we created during the Old Galt Festival. We hosted a dinner dance, we sold out within 48 hours, we had 250 attendees, so it was a great event. This year, we will not be hosting the Old Galt Festival, it's something that we're probably going to look at for next year. But we wanted to still relive that nostalgia and create that same event with a dinner dance this year, and hopefully have some exciting announcements that we can share at that time. So obviously, our goal is to have dinner, live music, lighting, and just a great community event. It's something that gives our local residents a fun evening, and I think it also attracts some of our neighboring cities as well. Wine, Beer, and Food, this would be our eighth annual Wine, Beer, and Food Event. This event showcases our local wineries, breweries, restaurants. It attracts residents from both our community and the neighboring cities. The main goal is to boost traffic to our local businesses and promote relationships between business owners and customers, ultimately enhancing our local business involvement and increasing sales tax revenue in our town. The Boot would like to host a Fall Harvest Festival. It would be in conjunction with the Trick or Treat on Fourth Street by expanding it into Chamber Park. With that, the intent is to welcome some of our other nonprofit organizations to have booths. Our goal would be, nothing is set in stone at this moment, but our plan is to have carnival games and rides, showcase a live band. This expansion would also allow us to invite other Chamber members who don't have businesses within the footprint of the Fourth Street Promenade to have booths and be part of the activity. So obviously, we're hoping to attract people to Galt, visiting our local businesses, and just having an expansion so that we go further into a fun night, other than just the trick-or-treating portion. You have any questions, Ron?
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
I just, Kate, I have just a question, the Old Town Dinner, what date?
So we are looking to do that the first Saturday of September, so it would be the evening after the Saturday market.
And the Fall Harvest Festival, what date that?
That would be October 26th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also have Gail Weber for La Heim for the Trick or Treat, and we'll call her up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This would be La Heim's fourth year of sponsoring the Trick or Treat on Fourth Street event. The estimated attendance last year was between around 1,500 to 2,000. We had one of the local churches join us, they brought in about 30 cars for their trunk-or-treat portion of it. The event is totally free, all we need is the street closed, we don't charge any of the vendors to show up, we invite all nonprofit service businesses to come. It's been a great event, and we really look forward to having it again. So we are preparing ourselves for like 1,500 trick-or-treat bags that we're making for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Gail, thank you.
Again, we will come back April 16th for direction on the approval. This is just a preview of the applications that we received tonight. Any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Garcia, I do have a question. And this is just kind of like, can you go back to the first slide where it talks about the program itself? Yeah, right there, yeah, right there. So because we're just, this is a discussion, we're not approving tonight, so I could say, everything that these people are doing, all of them look really great, love seeing this kind of stuff, love seeing all those organizations, you know, put their efforts out to do all these types of things. The only thing I might want to just mention to my fellow councilmembers here is that I think maybe we should do some verbiage tweaking with this a little bit, because the way it really comes off is that it's a event application, right? But yet, to be honest, and again, support all of it, everything in here is money well-used, but like, the Teen Center and the two things for the Historical Society are not really events, they're actually, they're technically improvements, like, to build a schoolhouse, 100% want to see the schoolhouse done. That $5,000 do that is going to be well-spent money. But we start getting into the thing where I don't want future organizations to see this and go, "Oh, well, the road," you know, I'm just, I don't know why I thought of Rotary, no offense to Rotary, but Rotary is saying, you know, "We have an office, and we need to, you know, renovate a room so we can meet better, so we want $3,000 to renovate our conference room." It starts, we start getting into that because we're asking for, you know, like, the Teen Center wants to put a flowerbed. Great for the Teen Center, Teen Center, you know, and all the things, how it's going to help promote well-being, all that 100%. But we're kind of, it's a gray area between what's an event and what's not. So I think what I would like to see is we just kind of tweak the verbiage here to be a little bit more open to, this is the community something grant program. Like, I think we need to get away from the definition of event, so to speak. Does that make sense, Chris, to what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I think I understand where you're going. I think the, you know, the bullet points under the title kind of work, almost everything you said, you could probably find a reason in most of those bullet points to justify funding those items you had.
Right.
But perhaps, you know, the title can be just.
But like I said, like, the Rotary is a bad example, but like, I don't know, let's say the Chamber comes, the Chamber says, "Hey, we got a new office, you know, we need to improve the facade of our office, we want to ask for $2,000 to do that." And the Chamber helps promote this, and we do this in the community, and it helps whatever, and that can tie into some of these bullet points, no questions. But again, we're kind of getting away from like, putting on this community event, so to speak. So I just want to make sure that, if we're going to be giving money for these things, that we just want to make sure that it very squarely fits into the definition of our goal. So maybe some verbiage changes just for future, or whatever, but 100% support everything here, I'm not advocating against any of this stuff, it's all great. But I'm just wanting to point that out, that's what came to my head when I saw it.
Understood. Fair point. Fair point.
Anybody have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I just think we install project after event, event or project, I think that takes care of it. And I just read the resolution from 2017, and I think the intent really is to support local community event, or events and/or organizations with items that they need.
Yeah, I like that.
Did you get that? It seems to me you can almost even just remove like special event and just call it the sponsorship program, if you want to keep it short and simple. I like that.
I mean, my only concern with, it's always fun to draft anything by committee, but my only concern is you don't want it to be so broad-sounding, it, you lose, there is sort of a definitive purpose that this serves, and so, you don't want, unless the intent would be to open it up for all sorts of local grants.
How about if we just use, what if we just lost the word "event," and it's the City of Galt Special Sponsorship Program? Special Sponsorship Program can be very generic, we still have the intent, we still have the thing, and would be up to us to decide if it fits within those bullet points. But I just think the event, the event represents like a, event is like, an event, something that happens and that's over with. It doesn't mean putting like, you know, basketball court in or some, you know, saying, so, those are great purposes, and I would like to be able to have those people apply for those things, but I think the word "event" needs to be lost.
I agree, and I do think that, you know, the bullet points then further define what the city is after.
Everybody agreed, just look up that, what's the Pacific, we can have something changes of Pacific.
And thank you to everybody that's doing something, thank you to La Heim for continuing a great event, thank you to the Chamber, thank you to all the other folks who are not here tonight, look forward to all these things, so thanks.
Thank you. Let's move to the, any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
All right, then we're moving along, next agenda item is communication.
None.
Thank you, City Clerk's report.
None.
Thank you. Comments by staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Public Works Director Mike Selling, he'd like to share them, when he's finished, I have a comment.
Thanks, Chris. Two things, actually, one came up, so I'll go with that one first. C Street, as I mentioned before, we're anticipating start of construction there, April 15th. Our PR firm, along with Genesis from the City Manager's Office, has walked all the businesses on the south side of C Street, and everyone seemed familiar with the project, no issues noted, no concerns. They're expecting to complete the north side businesses probably early next week, so just a quick update on that as far as the outreach goes, so things are moving smoothly. And then, the other thing I wanted, and there was a public comment, I believe, earlier about the quiet zone update. So, yesterday, the work was completed, the construction work was completed. Today, the Federal Railroad Administration Inspector came out, inspected it, gave us the thumbs up on the work, and then gave us another hoop to jump through, so to speak. He wants all the crossing data updated as far as number of cars, number of school buses that cross on essentially a daily basis. So, we're working expeditiously with our consultant, or I should say our contractor, to get tubes placed out there, get the counts done. We'll submit that back to Federal Railroad Administration, I would hope that they could turn it around pretty quickly, and then we, and we've also asked, anything else? We don't want any more surprises, this was, you know, unexpected and definitely felt a little pulling the rug out, so. So, anyway, all that to say, I would say we're probably still looking, unfortunately, in another, I'm going to guess, two to three weeks at this point, because once the Federal Railroad Administration approves everything, then UP is notified, and they have 72 hours to essentially get all the notifications to their staff, train engineers and whatnot, to stop blowing the horns, and essentially, the quiet zone will be reinstituted. So, with that, I don't know if there's any questions, but that's where we're at.
Mr. Selling, would it be possible to have, I'm sure you're already thinking about news, but have the city post something on their social media updating that?
Absolutely.
As unhappy, as happy as people will be at the news, if you could do that, then we can all share it.
Absolutely.
And get the message out, because it's the talk of the town.
Yeah, understandable.
The train's like a moving target, huh? The railroad is like a, literally a moving target, they just keep moving the, yeah. On the C Street project, I had somebody ask me today, and I think I want to make sure I misquoted, what is the estimated time for the project, for the C Street?
Yeah, so, I'll try to, what we do is we go by what we call working days, and that's essentially Mondays through Fridays, except for holidays kind of thing, or weather days, if you will. The project is, I think it's 140 or so working days, which would take us probably into mid to late November, probably in somewhere around Thanksgiving. As I think I noted previously, we have a, you know, a creative solution to modify the traffic control and essentially have a one-way loop, and what we have from the contractors, that should reduce it by about 40 working days. So, that's about two months. So, we would expect that the work to probably be done by late September, so.
So, we're looking like six to eight months?
Yeah, you're looking at essentially, right, yeah, I mean, mid-April through, what, May, June, July, August, September, so I'd say five, five and a half months or so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Selling, the quiet zone is only on the old part of Galt, that portion of town, correct, and it covers several streets, but?
Yeah, so it essentially runs from the south end of Coss, and I believe it, the last crossing is essentially Elm that's within the quiet zone.
So, for my other three councilmembers and that half of the city, how difficult would it be to extend the same courtesy and have a quiet zone on that half of the city?
I'm not sure I'm following you, what, where are you talking about?
Well, when I ran, when you campaigned in that area next to the tracks, those people are acutely aware of the train activity, and they asked for a quiet zone, and I realize that's not a very cheap thing, it's like a million and a half to get it done probably, but is it possible, or am I misunderstanding, because they were quite adamant that the horn blows at 3:00 AM and whatnot in different times?
Are you talking north of Elm, is that where I'm, I'm not sure I'm understanding the limits?
Maybe I can help.
Maybe I own spur.
There's a spur.
Oh, the spur line, yeah, that goes to the east.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so, we looked into that a while back, I can kind of dust off a memo, I think, that I provided to the City Manager, who I think in turn probably forwarded it to you all, but as I recall, so UP wants an initial deposit, and I thought the number back then was about $70,000, just to kind of, for them to start talking to us about it, and then we would have to do studies. There may be folks that were here, I'm going to look at Mr. Rice possibly, when the quiet zone here was done. And, yeah, along the main line, and I'm going to guess, my experience, I've done one before, and I think it was about a three-year process, so.
It was a long process, and it was expensive. That beautiful chain-link fence you see along the rail was part of the quiet zone initially, that was required to facilitate the quiet zone through downtown.
Expensive as it may be upfront, and I understand it, you know, it's not always easy to come with that kind of dollars, it's not a recurring cost, so.
That's true.
Over multiple years, it's very cheap, so I'll just throw that out there. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, just a quick economic development update, I assure you, we're always looking for ways to increase revenue, and trying to facilitate development on the Simmerhorn commercial property is one of them. Last council meeting or so, you approved funding for a traffic study to help facilitate development there. We're going to double down on that, and we want to facilitate a utility plan for the site in advance of development. So, Public Works will prepare, you know, some background on it and a funding request for that. And I really want to thank Mike Selling and his team for really going way outside the box for helping with potential development there. So, they're preparing the two studies, the traffic study, the utility plan, and I want to assure you, it is very outside the norm for a project, and then certainly for a Public Works Department. So, I really want to thank him and his team for stepping up and eagerly doing that, and educating me on some of the nuances of the project, so I just wanted to say.
Chris, is that, is the purpose we'd be doing this is to try to further incentivize people that were, that people that are prospective, looking at developing their commercial development? Is that what we'd be, so we can say to them, hey, we've already done?
Yeah, it's basically trying to get the site as shovel-ready as possible.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
This can be benefit to the city in the future.
Yes.
Thank you.
One more, is that also going to be helpful with the whole Caltrans kind of discussion with the Simmerhorn off and on-ramps that's going on?
The traffic study could help with that.
Traffic study, as I meant, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, next agenda item, all comments by City Council members and future agenda item. Vice Mayor Lazzano?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, thank you to the nonprofits and our partners at the Chamber for coming tonight and presenting their items. Look forward to attending as many of those as I can. Also, thanks to staff for all the projects and everything that you're doing to give us the information very easily. Matt sent out an email really late today that I found helpful as well, so thank you all for all that you're doing. I attended with the mayor on the 22nd, we had a, the Fire Department did a lifesaving presentation for a worker here at McDonald's here on Pine Street for doing CPR and saving a patron's life, and it was, it was really, really a cool event. I want to thank the restaurant for welcoming the presentation, as well as the Fire Chief, Felipe Rodriguez, for the invite. And then also, my computer's freezing, sorry. Tended the Empty Bowls fundraiser on the 30th. It's a fundraiser to help with the building of the Sunshine Food Pantry and Resource Center Building. It was well-attended, I think they sold over 250 tickets, and certainly had a lot of raffle prizes and silent auction items, and it was very well-done. So, thank you to that board for the work they're doing, and I think that's it. Oh, a couple of items, just real quick, yeah. On the 4th, at 10:00 AM, there's a fire station opening in Elk Grove, which will be directly serving our community. It's Fire Station 77, if you want information, I can get it to you. And remember, the Galt Shred Event is this Saturday as well, at 7:30 at the Market. That's it.
Question to the City Clerk, refresh my memory, when we gained the spot, permanent spot, on the Cable Television Commission, I don't believe we selected an alternate for that. We didn't, okay. Could we put it on the agenda to consider doing that, as I just discovered a conflict upcoming in my calendar? That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
Just wanted to mention that there's so many community events that go on, and all of us do a good, real good job with trying to make it to what we can, and some of us make it to more than others, and I think we do a good representation. I was able to make it to the St. Martin Foundation fundraiser. I missed the Empty Bowl, I wanted to attend, but I fortunately could not. But St. Martin Foundation was a good event, had a good turnout, was able to visit with former Supervisor Natoli and current Supervisor Hume, and discuss some stuff with them. But overall, really appreciate what that group is doing to try to get in front of, you know, some of the issues that lead to homelessness and such, so I really think that's really tied very tightly with that, and their efforts to get in front of, you know, those efforts. So, commend them on a good event, and I think that's all I had, so that'll be it from me, Mr. Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Vanowick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to public comment, Mr. Lee and Mr. Robinson. I'd be curious to understand more about the THC package and the potency that was purchased, I don't know if I misunderstood, but I'd like clarification on that, why, and I thought what he was stating was, is higher than we allow, because we don't. So, sometime I would like clarification from Chief or City Manager, please, and I do agree with him that the public deserves a final answer from the City Council after going all this effort of research and outreach, and then the public deserves a final answer on that topic. Several meetings ago, I requested and received support from my councilmembers about the public signs around town. The ones for the city, this is not a dig at the city, but, you know, they're nice, they're blue, white font, right? And then, but the ones like at Lincoln, by the pool, here at City Hall, they're stick figures, there's also ones at Twin Cities, and I think, it's not a large ask, and Armando, Armando was here when I made the request, I don't think it's a large ask to freshen those up. So, I'm just asking for an update, you know, for all of us, please, and thank you.
Mr. City Manager, it was before you, so you are not aware of that, so, thank you.
And then, yeah, okay, just, I'll just leave it at that, I'll talk to you later. And that's all I have. Thank you, everybody, for, you know, doing all the wonderful things you do, it's, the request for all the special events was 1/15th of 1% of our budget, so that's a lot of joy for a little money. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for the staff, all report, thank you for your hardworking, thank you for the public comments, and these are, all the comments are very important to me, are very important for whole council. Thank you for the nonprofit organizations represent here, thank you for bringing your proposal, thank you for doing something always for the city. I did join a couple events, I joined the ribbon-cutting ceremony of physical therapy, new site on C Street, a new facility, it's amazing, a congratulation to them. I also joined Consumer's Fire Representation with the Vice Mayor Lazzano, to CPR recognition for McDonald's employee for lifesaving measure, thank you for them. And that's all, if any councilmember have any comment, if he's not, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting 7:50. Thank you.